I hereby call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. The date is March 18th, 2024, and the time is 5:00 PM. We will start this meeting off as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silence, please. Madam President, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Let me remind everyone of the rules of civility and decorum which govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the Chair and should not interrupt the Speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, any person wishing to speak shall complete a comment card for each agenda item the person wishes to address, which shall include the person's full name, address, and the numbered agenda item. Be advised that the person will not be recognized if the comment card is not completed. Thank you. Madam City Administrator, are there any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Two items of note. Item 7-1, the update from Senator Powell and State Representative Edmonds will not be presented tonight. They have asked to have that rescheduled, and I'll do so. And then, secondly, on the consent calendar, item 8.12. I would like to note that in the background, it indicates that the grant provides for two positions, which is not accurate. It actually provides for a fire officer and fire inspector training program. So it will not provide positions but training programs related to those two functions.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We do have a proclamation to give this evening to the Lord's Place. Homelessness is a serious social and economic issue impacting all levels of our society, and the City of West Palm Beach and Lord's Place recognize that all people deserve respect and a place to call home. The City of West Palm Beach and Lord's Place are partners in providing that respect and pathway to a brighter future for men, women, and families who are homeless in our community. The City of West Palm Beach extends its appreciation to the Lord's Place for its leadership on this critical social issue and its wide array of successful programs and services, changing the lives of the homeless one life at a time. The Lord's Place will hold its 17th Annual Sleepout to End Homelessness on Friday, April 5th, 2024, at 2808 North Australian Avenue, West Palm Beach, which is the headquarters of the Lord's Place and the Fortin Family Campus. The Lord's Place will hold Sleepout 2024, both in person and virtually, to encourage everyone in the community and beyond to participate and step outside their comfort zone for one night and sleep somewhere other than their bed. The Lord's Place and the City of West Palm Beach recognize people from all walks of life will dedicate the night differently, but all, including the Honorable Anne Brown, have a common mission, shining a light on the homelessness and raising essential funds to bring an end to it. The Lord's Place and the City of West Palm Beach recognize the many community members supporting Sleepout, including the Honorable Anne Brown, who acknowledged that sleeping out under the stars is optional, but dedicating the night to ending homelessness is essential. The mission of the Lord's Place is to break the cycle of homelessness by providing innovative, compassionate, and effective services to men, women, and children in our community. I, Keith A. James, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, do hereby proclaim April 5th, 2024, as the Lord's Place Sleepout to End Homelessness Awareness Day. Here to accept the proclamation is Diana Stanley, the Lord's Place Chief Executive Officer. Want to say a few words?
Thank you so much. Thank you all very much. You know, I'm standing here thinking, oh my gosh, has it been 17 years? And it has been 17 years that we've been sleeping out. I'm looking at Commissioner Lambert. I mean, you were with me on the very first one. It's hard to believe. And this year is going to be so different because we are so happy to be able to host it at our new Fortin Family Campus right here in West Palm Beach. And we are reimagining Sleepout after 17 years. And what we're doing, instead of all of us sleeping out, we're saying to people, this is your own pilgrimage, right? This is a time, come for the program, help us light a candle in honor of those who sleep out every night, and then go home, go to your backyard, go sleep out in your car, do something that night that will make you pause and reflect on the thousands of people that are sleeping out on the streets. So we are excited about this reimagining Sleepout. We are so grateful to the City of West Palm Beach for your partnership, and this is just one event, as many, in which we are so committed to making certain that every single person has a place to call home. So thank you so much for this proclamation. God bless you.
All right, Commissioners, it's now time to look at the consent calendar, items 8.1 through 8.13. Any questions or comments on consent? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
May I move approval of consent calendar as presented, items 8.1 through 8.13?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion, we have any cards? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9.1, Resolution Number 50-24, approves the proposed art concept of Kai for the district by developer Imicore Ventures LLC to satisfy the public art requirement. One percent of the total construction cost is $925,250. Ms. Walter.
Hello, Sibylle Walter, Director of Arts, Culture, and Community Building. I am presenting the district, which is in Northwood Village, and this is a piece that has come to the Art Life Committee many times, actually, until it fit all the criteria. So what they are proposing is an LA-based artist, is a street artist. His name is Kai, or goes by Kai, and he has created what he calls the imaginary friend, If. It's a character that is throughout all his art practice, and what he has proposed for this development is a sculpture made of bronze that appears to be holding the weight of the building. So as I said before, it came through the Art Life Committee several times, and mostly because we wanted to make sure that it was feasible to do, that structurally, engineering-wise, it would happen. So what he has done is he has created a sculpture that wouldn't be necessarily freestanding, but in the backside, which is difficult to see, it actually becomes part of the column that would exist there in the building, but instead, we have If. So it is bronze, it is very unique, and it will be situated by Broadway and 24th, the cross streets. As you can see, it will be massive, at 30 feet, 24 feet, 19 feet, and it has been engineered to ensure that this actually could be viable. And he has done this before, I just wanted to show you an image of a work that he proposed and has been completed in Mexico. And then let me show you a quick video that they created, gives you a little more information. So that just gives you a better glimpse of how much change is soon to come. The total construction budget is shown here in 1% and Kai's uplift budget is $479,632. So that leaves a remaining budget. So the Art Life Committee has recommended two things. One, that the Kai structure of uplift is one only, and it will be unique. In other words, if another developer comes in to integrate a large piece like this into his architectural structure, it won't go through. We need only one, and Northwood is probably the perfect place for this piece. It will draw attention. And the other one is that, given that it is such a unique piece integrated into the architecture, the Art Life Committee feels that the remaining budget is encouraged that they put it into the public art account. That one piece is more than enough. And so, based on the findings of the proposed integrated sculpture uplift by Kai, which meets the criteria set forth in Section 78-125 of the Code, as reviewed by the Art Life Committee, they are recommending approval of this to City Commission.
Very good. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions, comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Lambert?
Not a question, just a comment, that I love the whimsical nature of this, and I think it's really great how our public art takes on many different forms throughout the city. So thank you for your guidance on this.
Thank you.
Ms. Fox?
Thank you, I love it too. It looks fantastic. Also, the whole project looks amazing. Can you talk a little bit about the Art Life, I guess, what would happen to the money that's left over? I mean, when it goes into that fund, how is it decided on, you know, what we'll spend that money on?
So it goes into the public art account, and that's the funding that we've used thus far in Heart and Soul Park. We've used it for Sunset Park up north in Echo Lake Park. So we, what happens is the Art Life Committee discusses all the areas that development isn't happening in, in underserved communities that wouldn't necessarily, aren't necessarily coming down to the downtown area, and a lot of it is in parks, because that's where our residents like to see their art. So all that gets redistributed back out to other areas.
And you generally give us a report, whatever six months or something is, to the status of that account?
Correct.
Do you know when your next reporting will be?
Right before budget.
Okay, very good. Any other questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Resolution Number 50-24. This motion is based on the findings that the proposed artwork meets the criteria set forth in Section 78-125 of the City Code as reviewed by the Art Life West Palm Beach Committee.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Walter. Item 9.2, Resolution Number 75-24, approving an amendment to the lease with the Cox Science Center and Aquarium. Mr. Oyer?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. My name for the record is Harvey Oyer, and I'm here on behalf of the Cox Science Center and Aquarium, and I am joined by our CEO, Kate Ariza, and our Board Chair, Lou Crampton, and regrets from Howard and Wendy Cox, who also wanted to be here. They are the namesakes of the Cox Science Center and Aquarium, and they are out of town. So I did not prepare a presentation. It is a minor amendment to our existing lease between the city and the science center. Staff has reviewed it. I have discussed it with each of the Commissioners individually. Delighted to try to answer questions. The one change that has occurred in the last several days is the removal of the provision regarding the right to create paid parking. And I can address that briefly. We presently have no paid parking. We have no intention in the near future of creating paid parking, but it is a 50-year lease. And looking at our peer group around the state, every other major science center in the state had to charge for parking, most other cultural institutions in the county do. We anticipated that might happen someday, not presently, so we incorporated that in. But as we thought through it with you and your staff, it'd be kind of difficult to do because we share parking with Drea Park, and how we would cordon that off, and who's responsible for what paving and striping and metering. It just was not worth the aggravation, given that we presently have no intention of doing that. So we've dropped that provision from the lease and made your City Attorney and Administrator aware of that. I'm delighted to try to answer any questions. Most of these are cleanup issues that were necessitated by a very good turn of events. This started, as you know, as a $40 million capital campaign to expand and improve what is a 60-plus-year-old building, and due to the hard work of the two people seated behind me, our board and Howard and Wendy Cox, they've now raised about $100 million. And so we had to change our plans and build a bigger, better plan than what you had approved last year. So almost all of these changes in the lease were necessitated by our success, and we thank you for being part of that success.
Do you recognize any other important board members in the audience this evening?
We have other board members here. In fact, the most important one to you is Lorna James, the First Lady of City of West Palm Beach. Do we have any other board members in attendance?
Oh, she out there?
We have our Board Chair, Lou Crampton, our CEO, Kate Ariza, and we thank all of them for their service. This has been an incredible turn of events, that we have moved from a $40 million expansion to what we think is going to land at about $115 million when completed.
What I find most amazing about this particular project, and there are others in the city, is the amount of the private sector interests in investing in this, and because it really is going to service kids, our children, children's children, for generations to come. And it says a lot about our community, quite frankly, that what started at $40 million is now up to over $100 million because of the generosity and largesse of so many people, again, investing, I believe, in the future of the children of not only our city but the county. So that says a lot about the leadership of the science center, as well as its board members, and certainly Howard and Wendy Cox. Any questions, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Appreciate the update on that, and I just want to say thank you to everyone with the science center. I'm looking forward, I have family in town for spring break, and we're going to go see the Titanic exhibit, so I encourage everybody who has not gone yet to make time to do that. I was wondering if you or Kate might be able to give us just a brief update on the timing of where we are with all of the expansion?
Well, Kate or Lou could give you a detailed one, but the important part is, assuming approval tonight, we will have a meeting of our Board of Trustees on the 28th of this month, and they will authorize a groundbreaking in April. So the project will commence while we raise the remaining $15 million, which we are very optimistic that we will. Kate, you may want to add to when we expect each phase of this to be completed.
Sure. Thanks, Harvey, and thank you. And just to echo Harvey, thank you for your support.
Kate, can you just say your name for the record?
Kate Ariza, President and CEO of the Science Center. Very appreciative of all the support we have received from every one of you. It's an exciting project. So as Harvey said, we will break ground officially last week in April. We'll do a big groundbreaking ceremony, May 1st. That's for Phase 1. That'll be the road, Drea Trail North will be moved, and we'll do some other site work. Phase 1 is all site work, underground utilities and things like that. The vertical construction will actually start a year from that, so in April of 2025 will be when the new facility, the new big building that you've seen in the drawings and the renderings will be built, and that will take about a year and a half. So right now, the tentative schedule is to open the new facility in December of 2026. Everything will be done by then, hopefully.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Staff, do you need to weigh in on this conversation? Just a check?
Nancy, you're a checked Deputy City Attorney. Staff supports the amendment, we have no issues with it, it's submitted for approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff, comments? If not, we do have one card. Oh, Lorna James.
Hello, everybody. I'm Lorna James, Pine Kay, West Palm Beach, Florida, and thank you all for listening to us this evening. I just want to say that this is a wonderful project, near and dear to my heart, the science center is. And as a student of STEM and had a long-term career in STEM, I just, I'm excited about the opportunity for the expansion, for the science center to be able to support more youth and programming in the STEM, STEM fields. And also, with this expansion, there's a large outdoor space that's going to be renovated. So, you know, members of the community, not only, they don't have to come into the science center to take a part of the activities and the wonderful expansion, they can enjoy the outdoor space also. So we just really look forward to having your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now Lou, you know, I don't have a card from you, so can you fill out one afterwards, please? I assumed you wanted to speak.
Lou Crampton, Chairman of the Board of the Cock Science Center and Aquarium, excuse me, almost slipped there. We are so pleased to have your support for this, and I have to say that it's ongoing support. We are ourselves identifying grants and other kinds of things that could involve the city in work beyond the science center, but to improve the Drea Park itself. We've come upon a very interesting grant from the Environmental Protection Agency, which is my old agency, when I served in the Reagan and Bush administration. So I know that agency very well, and it could provide some very profitable and some very good opportunities. I know Fay has been in a meeting with Kate, so forth. You know, we're talking about, right now, more than half a million encounters over the course of a year that we will double when we finally open. Many jobs, wonderful opportunities, as you say, for kids, science, technology, engineering, and math. Those are where the best jobs are, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Eight out of 10 require some involvement with science, technology, engineering. Matthew, you all know that, and that is our mission. Our mission is to open every mind to science, and we mean every mind. And we plan to be not only a local source of lifting people up and executing our mission, but we will end up being a regional source, a powerhouse, whose, as you say, our impacts will last for generations to come. So thank you for your support on this, it's very helpful to us, and we appreciate all of the ongoing support from you, Mr. Mayor, the Commissioners, and your staff. They've all been great.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, no more than cards. Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Resolution Number 75-24.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Lou, please fill out a card, please. That's what they tell me I got to do, I need your card. Okay. Resolution Number 44-24, ratifying the acceptance of a Florida Department of Commerce Community Development Block Grant, CARES, CDVG-CV, in the amount of $567,974 for the Community Paramedic Program, and Resolution Number 55-24F, providing for the receipt and appropriation of $567,974 in CDVG-CV proceeds in the Grants Program Special Revenue Fund, and Resolution Number 72-24F, amending the full-time equivalent personnel detail of the Grant Program Specials Revenue Fund for the Fire Department to add an operations lieutenant.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Johnson. I'm Kimberly Spence, Assistant Director of Housing and Community Development. So as stated, this item is to accept grant awards from the Florida Department of Commerce, which is formerly the Department of Economic Opportunity. The item will also appropriate those funds to the Fire Department Community Paramedic Program, and today I'm also joined by Chief Matty, who will be presenting more information on the specifics of the program. And the item will finally amend the full-time equivalent personnel detail for the Fire Department to add an operations lieutenant, which is what a portion of the funding will be used for the salary and the benefits of that lieutenant. To give you some background on this grant, the CDVG-CV2 grant was in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, so these are CARES Act funds. There are supplemental CDVG-CV funding for states and local governments, specifically to prepare, respond to coronavirus. So there are three tranches of this funding. The first and the third round went directly to cities and municipalities that are entitlement, recipients of CDVG funding, and the second round went to states to make available to eligible municipalities and counties. So the city was able to apply for a grant amount up to $567,974. Now, this is a timeline of our application process. This is a shortened version because we originally applied for this grant in October of 2021. The initial project that we intended to fund was the Clear Lake Trail Project, which is a construction, public improvement project. Given the timeline to expend the funds, some other considerations as far as other financing in that project, we had to identify an alternative project to utilize the funds. And so we were able to identify through, with the Fire Department's help, an eligible activity, which is the Community Paramedic Program. We did get approval in March of 2023 to amend the grant application, and we subsequently submitted that application to the state in the same month, and we just recently received the grant agreement in January of this year. The grant term, just want to point out that it's a retroactive grant, going back to October 1, 2023, so we have just under a year to expend these grant funds, they have to be spent by July 30 of 2025. A little bit about the project, so this is for the expansion of the Community Paramedic Program, which is meant to provide health services to high utilizers of the 911 system for non-urgent medical needs. Every CDVG activity has to meet a national objective of the program, so this activity was able to meet that objective by providing benefits to low and moderate income persons. And we are able to demonstrate that by saying that the activity will be citywide, and 57% of the city's population qualify as low and moderate income. Again, this is COVID-specific grant, so we had to show that there was a COVID tieback, and the way we did that was to target individuals with chronic diseases who are immunocompromised and at greater risk of contracting or getting seriously ill from COVID-19. This is the budget that was included in the proposal. As you can see, we are proposing to fund the salaries and benefits for the operations lieutenant, to acquire vehicles for vaccine distribution and health education, purchase medical supplies, to also enter into an agreement with the Health Hall, which is a telehealth platform, which the Chief will tell you more about, and also for some operating costs. We anticipate that the budget will be modified. Like I said, this application was completed over a year ago, so some of the line items have changed. So we have expressed to the state that we possibly could be coming with a modification to the budget that will likely look at us moving funding from the acquisition of vehicle line items and maybe some other line items into salaries and benefits. And so I will turn it over to the Chief.
Well, before the Chief comes, any questions for staff?
I'd just like to see, sorry.
I'd just like to see, sorry, Mayor.
Your pleasure, Warren.
I'd like to see Slide 5. I don't have a question about it. I'd just like to review it again.
Slide 5, this one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Diana Matty, Fire Chief. To continue on what Kimberly was talking about, with the Community Paramedic Program, the Fire Department is happy to be the alternative program for these funds. So what is the Community Paramedic Program doing? So this is what I kind of refer to as slow medical services, not the rapid emergent care that we're used to seeing, because these folks need more time. We need to take a slower approach with them and address some of the gaps that exist within our healthcare system. We do know that there are a lot of services available, but we're helping, this program is helping to tie those pieces together, to cut down on unnecessary trips to the ER, reduce their readmissions to the hospital. You know, and that comes with increased cost to the patient as well. Every time they're transported or every time they get an ER bill, you know, that adds up and it decreases their quality of life. Increase in access to primary care. We're hooking them up with doctor's appointments and setting those appointments for them, because just to get them out of that hole that they may be in, you know, it takes that extra help, that slow patient person, to sit with them and go over their medications and figure out what we can do to help. So how we're making a difference? We're working with the different social services, as I said, that are already here, working with the assisted living facilities, nursing homes, and everybody that, they've been going out and making these relationships so that they know who to talk to, where we can refer these folks to that need help. And, you know, in this photograph, you see this is a fall prevention class that they were helping to conduct with some elderly at a nursing home. So, you know, as we age, unfortunately, that is going to catch up with us. But there are simple techniques they can learn and simple exercises they can do to reduce those visits to the hospital. And as Kim talked about, the target groups, you have chronic disease management. So if someone is, has diabetes or kidney failure or liver complications, they're going to be more susceptible to COVID-19. So we're helping to get them on track with their diseases. They may have unsafe living conditions. There may be, you know, hoarder-type environment in their homes. We're dealing with alcohol and substance abuse patients that are often high utilizers of the EMS system. So in the first full year that we have record for, because we started in half a year in 2022. So 2023 was the first full year, and we had 185 referrals. The referrals are coming from the frontline crews that go out into the community and run 911 calls, and they may have run on this person six, seven, 10 times. And they send a referral to the community paramedics, and they follow up with them and go out, meet with the person, and see if there's any impact that can be made. So of those 185, 46 have completely completed the program and what they call graduated from the Community Paramedic Program. Excuse me. So just looking at cost, one, transport to the hospital costs $2,600. So they randomly selected five patients, which generated a total of 48 calls, which cost $124,000 in 2023. So that's just for five patients. So looking at the cost savings of getting those five patients off the books, we're saving about $104,000. Impacting one life at a time. This might move me, so I apologize in advance, because this one's very special. They have been working with a 44-year-old male who was diagnosed with a degenerative muscle disease as a young man and called 911 at least 24 times in the last two years. Resident of our city. And our paramedics that were going out to him, we've got the Community Paramedic Program up and running. They did a referral, and they went and met with him. And they started working with him and getting him arrangements for therapy and getting him on the right track to living a good life. And it's enabled him to become mobile again. And for the past six years, he has not been able to leave his home. And the work that they have done has changed this gentleman's life. So, you know, this newfound independence has allowed him to enjoy outings with his family and caretaker. Can you imagine not leaving your home for six years, but some kids come along and they make it better for you and they get you connected with the right services? And I say that because he said to them, "If it was not for you and your program, I would not be where I am today." And I recently left the house for the first time in six years. And I am so proud of that work that they've done. So our next steps are to return and execute a grant agreement should we approve this evening. We need to enter into an interlocal with HCD and the Fire Department and targeting to start this, starting getting the lieutenant on the road in April of 2024, which we can fill it immediately in the EMS division. And we have to track time and expenses for the grant. So we're going to do that in great detail. And then we need to purchase the equipment and technology. And that technology piece, as Kim alluded to earlier, was a program called Health Call, similar to what they use in a doctor's office or a hospital, but allows better patient tracking for ongoing cases versus the 911 call that terminates at the end when the hospital takes over patient care. So I'm happy to answer any other questions anyone has.
Very good. And thank you for sharing that testimonial. It really puts it in perspective. Any comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Fox, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. This is really outstanding. I have been waiting for this day to hear more about it and to know that it's up and running. I think the first time we talked about it was before I was even a Commissioner. And this is fantastic news to see how well the program's working. A couple of questions, but I guess I'll start with, if you, are you connecting with all the residents that you would want to? Or how many vehicles do you think we would want? I mean, is it, it looks like it's so successful that already, and just in terms of even the budget and saving money, I mean, is it that if we had five more vehicles on the road, we would be helping that many more people and taking away from the calls that are going to St. Mary's and Good Sam? Or does it kind of max out at a certain?
I think right now what we're taking is a measured approach. And we'll kind of, you know, expand it to this and kind of gather data. You know, I don't want to rush into overcommitting to something bigger than we need. So, you know, now we'll have the ability to have two lieutenants and two firefighters. So they'll split up into a full team. So two can go here and two can go there, do follow-ups or whatever they need to do together. And then, you know, we can kind of keep track over the next year or two and see where it goes. There are other departments that have robust programs that include mental health. So there's that whole other piece that we have the opportunity for. We just need to, you know, be very measured in how we grow it. Thank you.
Both your questions? Oh, okay. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. This is tremendous. I agree with Commissioner Fox. And, you know, love hearing the updates on this and met the lieutenant who's been working in this. And, you know, it just reminded me of, it's an old saying, but, you know, the saying, "A stitch in time saves nine." And I started to think about things that we take for granted now that are preventative care, like mammography, that now saves countless number of lives. And so I'm hopeful that one day we'll be looking back at this at the same level of preventative care. So thank you for that. I noticed in the fiscal note that, of course, right now we're relying on grant funding for this. And I know that Administrator Johnson mentioned that we'll be having an update from our Grants Manager hiring soon. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to continue to find grants for this in the future. But I guess my question relates to, and you mentioned kind of bench setting against other municipalities. Who is it that we're looking at for who's setting the bar high for these services?
There's a lot of this going on in California. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue has a program that's called Mobile Integrated Health. They have actual clinicians that work for them. You know, so theirs is just slightly, it's slightly different. They're paramedics. They have a bigger staff, obviously. But they do the same referral process. They use, if not Health Call, something very similar to it where the referrals can go in. But, you know, there's not a lot of departments around that are doing something like this. It's very innovative. You know, we always try to stay on the front end in West Palm. I mean, look at, you know, we're going to have a little creature holding up a building. I mean, we're just, we're on the cutting edge in everything we do. So the Fire Department's no different. I can't remember its name.
IF.
IF. IF is going to be holding up a building. But, you know, we want to stay on the cutting edge of everything. And this has been something that's evolving in the fire service for the past couple of years. And we wanted to be, you know, we wanted to grab onto that because it really does, it's making a difference. I mean, there, a couple of them are here this evening in the back there. And I'm so proud of what they're doing. And, yeah.
Thank you.
I hope I answered your question.
Thank you to you all as well.
And I think it's consistent with the attitude of the team that we built here in the city, Commissioners. I'm very proud of the fact that we tend to be the leader in a lot of these efforts, whether it's this, whether it's looking at AI, other things. And so this is just a small example, but an important example of the out-of-the-box and innovative thinking that the employees of the city are demonstrating and exhibiting. So thank you again. Now, Commissioner Fox, do you have another question?
Thank you. Thank you so much. I was just curious. It was the story you presented about the man who was having mobility issues. I'm wondering if there's any other data you're collecting about whether or not people are not going to a primary care doctor for other reasons, transportation, or insurance, or other issues? I'm just curious if there's that kind of data, because I know there was in the historic Northwest, a couple of years ago, they opened a walk-in clinic. And they were saying, you know, before they opened it, the two reasons that people weren't going to get healthcare mostly in the neighborhood was transportation, and second was insurance. So I'm just curious if you're seeing any, if you have any data about that.
Currently, I would have to ask Lieutenant Bianco if we have anything like that.
We keep track of it.
This is our lead community paramedic, Lieutenant Ashley Bianco.
Good evening, Ashley Bianco. We do keep track of it. We have plenty of patients that do have transportation issues as far as, you know, they can't get out of their house because they don't have a ramp and they're wheelchair-bound. So therefore, a transportation company comes to the house, and they'll refuse transport because they can't get them out of the house without the ramp. So we do have a patient that we were able to get that patient a ramp, and now they're able to get back to their primary care physician. So transportation is a huge issue for a lot of our patients. Does that answer your question?
Very good. President Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that this is outstanding and innovative. And I'm looking forward to this as we move forward. My question is along the lines of the fiscal note as well. And to quote, it says, "If future grant funding is not identified for the lieutenant position for the entire fiscal year '25 and beyond, the FTE will need to be covered by the General Fund." So initially, the inception funding is coming from a grant. But we're saying that moving forward from the funding that is provided by the grant, that this will become a position that is one that we will need to work into the budget.
That's correct. We would look to seek grant funding. And there are some grant programs out there, Department of Health and the Department of Health and Human Services have some grant funding available that we worked with a third party on. But we had to have, we had to have the program underway first. We had to have the data to prove that we could get the grant, would be eligible for the grant. So we needed to have a body of work to show them. So there are some avenues out there that we're going to look to. Currently, two of them are on a safer grant, a staffing grant from FEMA. So two of them are already on that grant. So we may seek to reapply for that as well, so.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion or motions.
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of Resolution Number 44-24, Resolution Number 55-24F, and Resolution Number 72-24F.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing on. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you again for your work. Thank you all. Item 9.4, Public Hearing of Resolution Number 77-24, Amending Section 8, Exhibit C of Resolution Number 253-23, Allowing for Substitution of Plans for Construction of a Dock at 3014 North Flagler Drive. Who is presenting on this?
Good morning, Mayor. Morning. Long day. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Ellie Halpern. I represent Eric Haberstad and his wife, the owners of the property that is the subject of this. We were before you quite a while ago for approval of a dock extension to 165 feet. This is a resolution to change the exhibit to reflect its reduction from 165 feet to 150 feet. Mr. Haberstad is being a good neighbor and reflecting the request of his neighbor that he reduce the dock by 15 feet. And so we have come before you to seek approval for that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Not a question. Staff or in the back room, can you take down this particular deck off the screen? So give us our pretty pictures on there. There we go. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant before we hear from staff? Okay, thank you. Stand by. Staff, what say ye?
Good evening. Valentina Broglia, Planner with the City of West Palm Beach. Resolution Number 7724 is an amendment to Resolution 25323. It was approved for a special use Class A permit to extend the dock that's existing 100 feet to 65 feet on November 13th at the City Commission Meeting. Resolution 25323 was appealed by the adjacent neighbor to the north, which resulted in a litigation against the City of West Palm Beach. Both parties agreed to reduce the approved dock by 15 feet, leaving a total of 150 feet total to dispute the litigation. Let's see. I provide a site plan showing the resolution that was approved in November, which is Resolution 25323, which is the dock that goes out more over here in comparison to the 15 feet pushed back. Staff is recommending approval of Resolution Number 7724 to amend Resolution 25323, Section 7, and substitute the site plan for the dock, reducing the length to 150 feet.
Thank you. Was this the matter where Heisinger was the neighbor and their whole dispute about navigation? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. So it looks like we're working toward a resolution. Any questions, comments for staff? Any cards? Okay. If there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Resolution Number 77-24.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing on. All those in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Item 10.1, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 5082-24, Dissolving the Golf Commission Dependent Special District.
Nancy, your check deputy city attorney. This is second reading. There's no changes from first reading?
Very good. Any questions? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I know we covered this on the first reading, but just wanted to reiterate and verify that all of the functions that need to be continued are being observed, absorbed by the park board now or staff in relation to anything that needs to be covered.
In terms of the operating, it's by the lessie. And in terms of, yes, the oversight by the advisory committee is now with the board and/or staff, and reports that will be made to the commission.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing on. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance Number 5082-24 on second reading.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing on. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5082-24, An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, dissolving the Golf Commission Dependent Special District, dissolving the Golf Course Advisory Committee, deleting Article 4, Golf of Chapter 58, Parks and Recreation Facilities Facilities of the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, providing for codification, providing for severability and conflict, providing for an effective date, and for other purposes.
All those in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10.2, public hearing and second reading of ordinance Number 5093-24, to increase the number of regular committee members appointed to the Education Advisory Committee from nine to 15.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Kimberly Roffenberg. There is no changes since first reading, and we submit ordinance Number 509324 for approval on second reading.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance Number 5093-24 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and second at discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5093-24, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida at Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Division 2, Education Advisory Committees, Section 2-77, Composition, Appointment, and Terms, increasing the number of committee members, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
All those in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and now time to turn to comments from the public. We do have one card, Fiona Ralphs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am Fiona Ralphs of 39527 Street, and I don't know if you could tell, but I have my "I voted by male" sticker on, and it should be no surprise to anyone who I voted for. It would be District 5 Commissioner Christina Lambert. You can't run for reelection unless you've already been accepted, already been approved, anointed, talented, well-able. So I'm smart enough to pick a commissioner that's already been picked by a 10 out of 10 dentist. Those are teeth for Washington right there. So tonight, however, you're faced with opposition. I hate the bad-mouthed Matthew Lusanio, and God has clearly beaten me to it, but when he talks about his morals and values, he's not just lying out of both sides of his mouth, he's looking dumb out of both sides of his face. District 5 will not be run by John Lovett's unsuccessful twin brother. It's like watching a stroke in slow motion. Now, Mayor James, enough fooling around. I've brought you so many good ideas, and I heard a call about STEM education tonight, the science, technology, math. Now, I brought a plan to Commissioner Fox, how to address the homelessness crisis, and she thought it was a great idea. And you said you'd be willing to hear anybody's plan on addressing the homeless crisis. And so, you know, I just want to ask you, like, there is no reason to have one bit of plastic trash in our city when plastic is 100% recyclable. We can take that trash and make it into 3D printer filament to go directly to our school systems to promote STEM technology and courses. Now, I think that the opportunities that will be made from incorporating this with our city, you know, helping some of our underemployed people be able to, you know, have temporary jobs, you know, in results to sorting plastic and whatnot. I did a whole presentation on this, and I just want you to know, I'm available anytime to, to go ahead and give that to you further. So I hope you have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now turn to comments from the dais, and we'll start with you, President Warren.
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank you to everyone that has already gotten out to vote. And those that have not, I encourage you to get out, vote tomorrow. If you are a registered voter on Tuesday, March the 19th. If you need help finding your polling location, it is simple and easy. Please visit www.votepalmbeach.gov. Voting is very important. Please exercise your rights and let your voice be heard. March isn't only known for St. Patrick's Day, although I may have had some green beverages yesterday. It is a significant month for health awareness, health awareness days as well, and there are multiple health awareness days. Health awareness days are excellent opportunities for education and raising awareness of health issues. They can encourage prevention, early detection, de-stigmatization, and management of health conditions. Many of you know that I am a health advocate. Some things to observe this month is endometriosis awareness, ovarian cancer awareness, National Nutrition Month, multiple sclerosis awareness, World Hearing Day on March 3rd, World Kidney Day, Brain Awareness Week, World Down Syndrome Day, World Tuberculosis Day, National Doctors' Day. So please recognize those days and do your early detection. Happy spring break to all of the West Palm Beach teachers, school bus drivers, staff, and students. Spring break lasts this year from March 16th through 25th. Everyone enjoy a safe and happy spring break.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I want to say thank you to Fiona for coming and reminding me about your great plan, and I hope that the rest of you will be able to meet and hear more about it. It's fantastic, win-win for our city if we could find a way to put it into action. So thank you for the reminder. This Wednesday, March 20th, Chief Adely and I will be presenting at the Historic Northwest Business Alliance. That is the new Historic Northwest Merchant Group that has started there, that has asked us to come speak about securing our community. That will be March 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at City Site Suites. All are welcome, although they're a new group. You know, mostly the, the members are all Historic Northwest businesses. They have invited the whole community to come and hear input and share their thoughts. So please come out if you would like to. I also wanted to thank the team working to repair the issues on Tamarind and not Okeechobee so quickly, and thank you to the communications team for really getting the word out. I'm curious if there's any updates about just the cause of the issue, if there's anything else we should be concerned about for the rest of Tamarind. I mean, I know that there was a water main break, but because we're working on other parts of Tamarind more north, I'm just, you know, want to get ahead of it if there's other things that we should be thinking about. So we'd love an update, if not now.
Mr. Fana, can you address that? Do you have any information?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Ramondo Fana, Assistant City Administrator. Yeah, it looks like there was deterioration in that specific water pipe, and so there is an evaluation occurring. First thing was to get that under control, and we have gotten the, the water stopped there, and the work should be completed later tomorrow. However, we are continuing to evaluate the, the pipe further up to make sure that, that there's no significant deterioration that needs to be taken care of. But that evaluation will be taking place over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you so much. And I also want to say good luck to Commissioner Lambert. You have my vote. I think it's very important for the communities to know that you're in the entire, tire dais is behind you and supporting you, and that says so much about the work that you've been doing and how much we enjoy working with you. So good luck tomorrow, and good luck to all the candidates and in all the cities, and just remind everyone to vote. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to my colleagues, Commissioners, Mayor, community advocates and leaders for your support. It's, it's an honor to be on the ballot again to run for City Commissioner of District 5, and I will be out there waving signs tomorrow. So I hope to see anybody who hasn't voted already out there, or just swing by and wave and say hi. I wanted to say thank you. I'm sorry, Chief Matty and some of our fire department isn't still here. A week ago Sunday, there was a tragic fire at a home of one of my neighbors. Probably about 75 feet from my front door, my neighbor's house caught on fire. And unfortunately, he suffered third-degree burns and had to be airlifted to Memorial, Jackson Memorial in Miami. And we're, we're keeping tabs on him, but just, first of all, I want to say thank you so much to the fire department for their swift response, and I, it was amazing. I stood at my front door and got to see them in action, very organized, thoughtful. The way that they worked as a team, we should be very proud of our fire department and our first responders. Second of all, just a reminder to everyone to check your smoke detectors and ensure that we're doing what we need to, to, to stay safe and, and to keep our families safe. In recognition of the, recognition of sleep-out and homelessness awareness, I, Diana mentioned, I couldn't believe it. She was right. I was at the first sleep-out that the Lord's Place had, and it is amazing to see the advocacy and the work that we're doing in this city for homelessness outreach. And I just wanted to say thank you to the Lord's Place, to the many other organizations, and to our city's team. I've mentioned before, my husband and I walk our dogs, and Brianna in the morning every day were, try to every day in Phipps Park, and we came upon a young lady and her five-year-old daughter who were homeless. And we, the, the parks maintenance people and we had called the city staff. I went home to go get her some additional resources, and I came back, and already staff was working on reaching out to her, getting her into a family shelter and getting her the help that she needed. And so I'm just, I know that it's a process when we work with our homeless population, but I just want to say thank you to the staff who worked tirelessly to help them. And again, like others, just happy spring break, and don't forget to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's been said, tomorrow is Election Day. For those who haven't voted early, we do know about the one candidate, Commissioner Lambert, who was up. But there are also two important referendum questions on the ballot. First is whether or not to increase the residency period required for elected officials to run for office from six months to 12 months. And the second one relates to prohibiting a mayor's outside employment and limiting business relationships. Take a look at those resolutions if you haven't voted. Referendum carefully. Make your own decision. And please visit the city's website for, to locate your precinct and also other election resources. Big week this week, beginning Thursday, March 21st, is the 42nd Annual Palm Beach International Boat Show. It goes from Thursday to Sunday, right in our downtown West Palm Beach. I am told that this is second only to the boat show in Monaco for the number of boats that are sold. It will feature more than 800 boats, ranging in size from eight-foot inflatables to nearly 250-foot-long superyachts docked at the waterfront. And we're expecting over 55,000 attendees to come out. So everyone spend some time on the waterfront at the boat show. Because of the boat show, Climatis by Night, which is normally on Thursdays, will not happen, and nor will the Green Market, which will be on Saturday, which normally would have been on Saturday, will not be held. The City of West Palm Beach is excited to introduce Your Waterfront, Your Way, which is a community engagement design, initiative designed to solicit feedback from city residents, residents throughout the city, city businesses, and visitors on their vision for the city's downtown waterfront. The downtown waterfront boundaries for this initiative are from Flagler Memorial Bridge to the north and Royal Park Bridge to the south, bridge to bridge. So join us for a series of Your Waterfront, Your Way public meetings hosted to help the community discover the vision and priorities for their ideal waterfront. The meeting dates and locations are as follows: On Thursday, April 11th, at Cacti Park of the Palm Beaches, 5444 Haverhill Road, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that's what used to be called the Ballpark of the Palm Beaches. On Tuesday, April 16th, at South Olive Tennis Center, 345 Suma Street, also 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And on Saturday, April 20th, at Mandel Public Library, 411 Climatis Street, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And that's all I have. Have a great night. Oh, I'm sorry. President Warren wanted additional comments, so one additional comment from President Warren. Yes, President Warren?
Thank you very much, Mayor. As a historic woman in our city, I'd just like to thank Administrator Johnson for her work to acknowledge women in this history month, and to bring together women and leadership in our city, to present to all of our employees, the ladies that are here in our city, for them to understand that they have voices and to understand that leadership looks different for everyone, but to encourage them to embrace who they are and to recognize them as leaders in their own spaces and own right. Thank you very much for all of that hard work. It was a lot of fun participating in the fashion show, and I look forward to see what's in store for us as we continue to move forward with Women's History Month celebrations.
It was wonderful.
And it is not lost on me that I happen to be the only male on the dais this evening. I don't know if that's intentional, I have to talk to Commissioner Beduzzi, but it is an honor to be on the dais, serving with such esteemed, talented, confident, competent women.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.